Everyone, this is Arthur Shopper. I'm no longer John Adams, but I'm still helping to fight to make this country great again. So I'm just ensuring I got my camera. I see some of my brown supremacist friends. And now they're really terrified, which they should be. Because now they know they're not gonna get away with anything anymore. So off I go. Everybody. You get to have a front row on the craziness that may or may not have taken over this culture. We're gonna fight, and we're gonna fight to win. Uh huh. So, let's see what they try to pull today. So guess what? Would you like to tell me? So here we go. Like good old Andrew Breitbart. Descending into the fight. Losing so much weight. Sorry guys, give me a sec here. Okay, bear with me here, guys. Alright, I need you sharing this. We're gonna be doxxing some people today who harassed women and children. And they're not gonna know what to do. Put down your camera. Are you scared? Put down your camera. Are you scared? Why did you terrorize children? Why did you terrorize women and children at a family function? Including you, who work with kids. Everybody take a good look at this guy. We'll have him doxxed in about an hour. Wait, why are you hiding your mask? Why did you terrorize women and children? Why did you do that? Hello, Mr. and Amorado. You've never been arrested, right? Is that true? Tell us about May 30th, 2014. There you go. Oh wow. I'm being threatened now. That's nice. So, you've never been arrested, right? Yes or no? This is a recording here today. I'll put another one in anyway. That guy got arrested, May 30th, 2014, and lied to me about it. Gotcha. I like that figure. Oh, I'm gonna sit over here next to my good friend Eden. I also got a new hat. Tell me to wash my car, I'll get a new car too. Everybody can dox Eden, he's been arrested before. He says he's not afraid of his past. Let's see what happens when it's exposed. And this guy sides with brown supremacists who attacked children in Santa Ana yesterday. Sorry, that happened, but I did the best I could. Go for it. You pepper spray people? How you doing, Mike? This guy colludes with brown supremacists to attack children in Santa Ana. You don't know who they are? Where are they? They're not either. They're all... That guy right there was one of them, attacking children in Santa Ana, right there. And that guy works in education too. And he's hiding. And there's Joseph, the guy who had me arrested for no reason, right there. And he doesn't wanna look at me anymore. I wonder why. That guy attacked children in Santa Ana. Deal with it. I'm just rolling. I'm gonna stay right here, okay? Give me a sec, Coates. You can come over here if you wanna talk to me. I need a minute, okay? Did you? I wanna be sure, just in case. The city council's late, where are they? They're late. I'm on time and they can't be here? Oh, fair enough. Okay, so they're just taking care of it early. So, everybody, I just want you to know really quick that this young man attacked children and parents in Santa Ana, California, when I was trying to teach along with nine other people about our wonderful history. This man works in education. Take a look at him. I have friends watching this, they can dox this guy, and we'll talk to your administrators. Notice how he coughs. And this guy did as well. He attacked children and parents. His name is Jaguar Redfeather, but I think he's more of a buffalo. A water buffalo. There you go. Thank you very much. Heifer, yeah, a female cow, more like it. Sunny as... We got plenty. You didn't answer my question, why did you attack children? He lives with his mother. Yeah, he does. People decided to harass children. Right here, Mr. Enfonso, right here, said to a black lady to go back to Africa, right here. Yep, we were all witnesses for it. What? It's what I thought. I know, I'll get arrested for being white.
No, you're right, right.
Okay, exactly. I have one reason why the city council hasn't shown up yet. Cause my government claim, I just got the administrator who called me. And they have now four proofs, including the minutes where they deliberately lied on a government document. Whoops. That's why they're not here probably. What is it? Yes, Sam. Thank you. What's up, Diet Pills? You're an ass? Sit down, thank you. I know. She's already... She told a black man to shut up. Wow.
I told you to shut up.
Jeez. Oh my goodness. So Chanel, we understand that a couple of people don't like black people in this room. They all know me though. That's okay. Oh, I'm not black, she is. Are you blind, as well as stupid? I guess you are, you're excused. There's the door. You're a ridiculous moron, we know. Diet Pills, get off the diet pills. Uh oh, they finally show... Wow, look at all these, they finally show... Do we have a quorum? Good. I know, there's so many bigots in this room. Right over there. There you go. And where's Panetta?
City clerk, I would like to call ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I get roll call?
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Councilor Avila? Councilor Macias?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pinella? Mayor Sanabria?
Here, thank you.
She's a bigot too. Thank God, God knows we need it.
Heavenly Father, as we thank our thanks for this day and all of its blessings, we ask that you guide and direct our decisions and actions. Please grant each of us the ability to make the progress contribution to our community. As we celebrate Independence Day this 4th of July, we ask that you please keep us safe from harm and to bless our soldiers who continue to fight for independence and freedom. We pray for them and for their family and their return home. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain silent. Councilmember Avila, please lead us in the part of the meeting.
To legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we move on to the presentation and announcements.
Just one announcement at the side of the chair. It's a council meeting, so let you know that the presentation was scheduled this evening. We'll be postponed to later dates.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we move on to public comments and call the speakers.
Alright.
Thank you.
There you go.
We the People Rising?
That's a lot of people.
I'm sorry, whoever submitted the card for We the People?
Yes.
Rising? And please remember, there is no personal communications inside. Last call for We the People Rising? Seeing no one, we move on. Betty Brown? Betty Brown?
Oh well.
Ms. Betty Brown, is there a Betty Brown? Seeing none, we move on. Protoco Cruz?
Buenas noches a todos. El objetivo porque estoy acá siempre es por la causa de... Hay una azul que tiene más de dos meses en la calle. And, um... It's really sad that we see five for two months in the street. This is the area where a lot of kids do... Um, senior citizens. It's really, really sad. I don't know what else to do. I don't know how to provide to them and help. But if they just count their job and pay a lot of taxes... Too much taxes. And you guys are doing nothing whatsoever. It's been two months that I'm just everywhere. And when the residents called, we wanted to pay... I don't know, twenty-five, a hundred dollars, I don't know how much it is. Which is really sad because the city is losing really bad. And we need to do something about it. The sad part is you guys are the ones with the power and the money in your hands. You don't have anything. And you don't do anything about it. It's a sad, only situation that's going on. It's very sad because the city is losing that. And it's sad that you guys groups fighting over something. That they don't know what's going on with the city. Our city is hurt, our city is bad.
Thank you Rudy Cruz for speaking out.
Yesterday, I know the police department, but I know they're short. And they're working under a lot of stress because there's no money. I guess you don't have good leaders in the city. I called me, they do this to individuals throwing illegal firecrackers. It is like calling... No space, there's nobody answering, nobody goes to check it out. It's this two individuals, they were throwing illegal firecrackers on the street. They were going under the car. I mean, we're hopeless. And we still... We're still owe three hundred and fifty million dollars. You guys don't know where they are, but I can, I guess I can point you a finger where you can find those three hundred and fifty million dollars that were missing, that's why you're hurt. The individual man is the other one. I think border fellow was talking about going to 401K. I think for hunting partners, that will be the best solution. Because you're taking an illegal tax from my property to cover pension land. And whatever's going on, if anybody's gonna sign to take away the utility user tax, I'm for it. Because we gotta see changes. We gotta flip the city to see where the rats are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker Chanel Temple, which will be followed by Janice Montague. I'm not a good word.
Lord. We're not a lead.
Chanel Temple, and I represent on the position now of Black Lives Matter State. I would like to just start off by saying, it appears that the city of Huntington Park wants to try to appeal to our compassion. Okay? Therefore liars are standing for you and telling untruth. Black individuals are treated like black slaves, which is a lie. I don't know, I come from a family, my descendants are black slaves. My great-grandfather, I knew my grandfather, but my great-grandfather was a slave. I was born within a hundred years after slavery, okay? So, it's not great, great, great.
I got you.
Okay? It's very offensive when someone stands up here and lies and says illegal immigrants are being treated like black slaves. I don't know any black slave that receives free medical care, receives free welfare, receives free tax money, receives a free education. My people couldn't even read a book. And they gonna sit here and lie and acquaint that they're being treated like slaves? They get arrested, they do crimes, they get arrested, and they get turned loose for rape? When my people are in bodies for four hundred years? And they gonna lie and say they were treated like slaves? And the city of Huntington Park wants us to believe that what this impostor is saying is true? Okay, it's very offensive. I know it's freedom of speech, and they have a right to say that, but I don't want them to sit there and say it. Instead of them talking about black slaves, they need to bring up Mexico's history of having black slaves. But maybe they're referring to the black slaves that they treated like dogs in Mexico. Why don't we stand up there and talk about that? And again, he needs not to stand up here and lie, it's very offensive. And no, I'm not going back to Africa. This is where I was born, and my people have been here for centuries. And again, I have freedom of speech, okay? And the record needs to be strict. Before you talk about somebody else's black slaves, you need to look at your own self and talk about the black slaves that were in Mexico treated like a dog. It's, again, it's very offensive. But you want to have compassion for youth, for your people, feel sorry for them, feel sorry for the legal criminals coming over here. Why my people with three sites are locked up in jail when they do a crime? But yours are catching leaks, but we should still feel sorry for them. Why they raping, stealing, and killing? We have had enough, point game, the game is over, they die for Trump. He was cleaning the house, we wanted out. No compassion, none, zero.
Thank you. Next, Janice, followed by Janet West?
Hello, my name is Janice Montgomery. Thank God for Donald Trump for following the Constitution, the law of the land, and protecting proud Americans. With the lawful travel ban now enacted to protect United States citizens. The House finally passed a bill that's become known as Haight's Law, which increased penalties for illegal aliens who have already been deported, caught, and attempted to re-enter the country.
That's good news.
The other bill was denied federal grants to sanctuary cities like yours. We as Americans actually are now celebrating the ideas and laws of the land, our Constitution, our country, rather than hearing you politicians play lip service while trying to dismantle the United States. Like you, the city council of Huntington Park having two illegal aliens in commissioner's position, when you have legal Americans in this city for the job. You predict, you protect criminals over the people and law enforcement safety. Your deal is coming soon. Thank God for our president.
Thank you. Janet West, followed by Bonbeck?
I'd like to start out the same way. Thank God for President Trump. For the record, I wanna say that I was sitting in front of Arthur at the meeting where he was thrown out. The only words I heard total from Arthur were when he told a police officer that the lady was shining the light in his eyes. Other than that, he didn't utter a word. And he was sitting on my hearing side. So, since somebody pointed him out as someone that you should throw out, can I point out some people? I mean, I see a few people in this audience I would like to throw out. So can I point them out and they'll be thrown out? Because that's what happened to Arthur. I just wanna point out some of Trump's positive things that have happened lately. Haight's Law, Sanctuary Cities Bill, um, the tech, that text, oh well, that's different. And the travel ban being upheld nine to zero at the Supreme Court. A court should not be able, one judge in a court should not be able, or a panel of judges should not be able to decide security issues for the United States. They're not pretty to the information that the administration is looking at. I would also like to thank the state of Texas and nine other states who are going to go to the court to have DACA repealed. I ask you again to get your two illegal aliens off the commissions. They have no right to be on commissions that are deciding how citizens should be spending money in grants. One of your previous speakers spoke about how hopeless it is here and how changes are needed. I think that the city council needs to take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonbeck, and she will be followed by Iglesia Sinai?
City Mayor Halsberg, my name is Bonbeck. I have a home here, but my feeling remains. And it begins, I cross the river. Core and broken, hate busts the employable folk. Nice man treat me good in there. Sandy will see welfare. Welfare say he come to warn. He send cash right to your room. Welfare checks that make you wealthy. Medicaid to keep you healthy. Buy and buy, I got plenty of money. Thanks to you, taxpayer dummy. Thank you friends from other land. Tell them, come fast as you can. They come and fussing and shitty drugs. I buy a big house in the welfare clubs. They come here, we live together. More welfare checks, it gets better. Fourteen families, they move in. But neighbors, patients wearing thin. If I any white man moves away, I buy his house and then they say, I'm more alien for housing again. In my yard, they put ten. And for a decade, they just trash, and they too draw welfare cash. Everything was very good. Soon we own a whole neighborhood. We have a hobby, it's called breeding. Welfare pay for baby feeding. Kids need dentists, white need pills. We get free, we got no pills. Taxpayer crazy, you pay all year to keep welfare money here. You think America darn good place. Too darn good for black memories. Ain't no like us, ain't no pop, they can go, answer bill of Mexico, God bless Donald Trump, check say.
Thank you. Iglesia Sinai, and they will be followed by Mike McCoy.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, before you begin, I just wanna clarify, there is only one speaker per card. Okay, thank you, go ahead. I did a lot just to make sure.
Um, so my name is Megan Sanchez, I'm here representing this is Sinai. Um, we're just seeking a three-day permit for an event at Solley Park. We previously approached Solley Park over at their office, and we indicated that we should come in for a permit. This event is intended to help our community and just reach out to the families. We understand there are a number of problems that we're facing right now, especially regarding immigration and security. And we just wanna be a support for our community, as well as to do human, if we have certain issues with our youth, gain problems, start additions. We would want to be a support system for them and just offer them services and counseling. Just bring the message of hope and support for our community, that we've just seen that has been lacking the last couple of months and a couple of years. Um, in the past, we've been doing foreign local events, and we have seen some youth come around, meet our additions, or just see the help that they haven't had before.
Thank you. Mike McCoy? Mike McCoy, and then we'll be followed by Robin Givittson?
False love always emboldens aggressive violence and war. True peace emanates from the strength that comes from a deep knowledge of what is right. Never compromising or backing down. And, for, never backing down for any reason whatsoever. I'm a member of the We the People Rising, who've been characterized as anti-immigrant people. We're not anti-immigrant people, we're anti-illegal immigrant people. Our common denominator is not the color of our skin, it is the content of our character. And we want to see our country run by the law, the laws of the land. And we don't like seeing politicians running them, doing whatever they feel like they wanna do. So we don't really like that. And also, I'd like to point out that the ICE hotline number is still open.
Can you suggest the chair for the sir?
It's eight six six DHS two ICE. That's been pre-blocked up for, there's so many calls, but if you call, if you type this in on email, ice.gov/tips, and you can leave a tip on any area of the world. And maybe if our illegal aliens around here maybe want to turn themselves in. That would be the right thing to do. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Evelyn, followed by Kenneth Hardy?
My name is Robin Givittson, I'm with We the People Rising. And again, we are just here to say we are disappointed that this body politic appointed two individuals in our country illegally to be on commission seats. We are here to plead that you do the right thing and remove those two individuals and appoint American citizens. I too was a witness to Arthur Shopper, Shopper. Two meetings ago, he absolutely was not talking. In fact, when he was delivered a warning, Rudy had just been speaking, and Arthur was listening fully to Rudy's talk. It was horrific to see this false order placed upon Mr. Shopper. In addition, Mr. Panetta is not here tonight, but he is running on his Facebook an inflammatory piece about the proposed initiative. Now, he called out citizens in Huntington Park as an elected official. This is not appropriate. And I went on the Facebook and I posted a very factual statement. I said that citizens in this country have the right to analyze the initiative and vote on it. And then I just pointed out that Nick the Greek has been recognized nationally for his immigrant date. Mr. Panetta deleted my post, but there are other posts that are threats that are still there. I checked before I came to the city council meeting, I'm gonna read one. It says, uh, I live next to, and then it's swear words, I cannot say at the council... "I cannot say at the council chambers, expect he's gonna, I'm gonna make his Fourth of July hell." And then it has two devilheads next to it. This is a threat on a councilman's Facebook. And we plan on reporting this. This should be removed. He removed my very factual posting, but left this threat. And in closing, I would just like to say, those two citizens, Nick the Greek and Daniel Salazar, they are citizens in Huntington Park. They are the ones that should be appointed to the commission seats. They would then receive a rightful stipend, and this is the right thing to do. You should be appointing citizens. As a body politic, you should be in support of federal law and not abandoning it as you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth, followed by Raul Rodriguez Jr.?
Good evening, everybody. Good to be here. And I want to use this time, my time, just to give a little civics lesson, since I am an educator, a teacher of the Constitution. And I noticed, I couldn't help but notice on the wall there, I like that, that inscription as I walked in here, it says, "We, this is where there is no vision, the people perish." Now that's a biblical scripture or a reference. I find that very interesting, you know? We talk about separation of church and state, and that we pray and we recite scripture. So the founders of this country had a vision. They gave it to the people, and the people would control governments, not government controlling the people. This is very important, because as we have people migrating to this country, as the founders were immigrants, because of the fact that they were British citizens, and yet they became American citizens. But they did it on the basis that they were all agreeing to a form of government, a rule of law, which is the Constitution of the United States. So that's what hopefully we should do when we come to this country, to want to benefit from this country's, all the greatness of the country. And it's so important that we understand that. And this is what I, this is the problem I have with illegal immigration, is that people don't recognize the beauty of this country being the Constitution. They're not respecting the rule of law. And I'm talking about those who commit crimes and are excused for those crimes by our leaders. And I would ask you, please don't go that route. Please support ICE and support the federal government, which is the Constitution, it's under their jurisdiction. Please support them in doing what you know is right, to protect the community, the people, so that those who migrate or immigrate, migrate here can enjoy the same benefits of protection of the laws of nature, meaning their natural rights, as all of us do. And that's what I ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Raul Rodriguez, and he will be followed by Robert Laitchen.
Okay, I would like to start by saying I'm not American. I love this country. I was born in this wonderful country. And I am very proud that Americans stood up and voted for Donald Trump as the President of the United States of America. And it's about time that you people wake up, accept it, and suck it up, because he is your president as much as ours. So please get over it. Now, the main thing I want to talk about is I called Mr. Cisneros today, the manager, twice, once at nine twenty-eight, and then again at one thirty-four. I never received a reply. I also called the chief of police twice. Once at nine thirty a.m., and then again at one forty-one p.m. I never received a reply also. And the reason why I was calling is because Johnny Piñera posted something on his Facebook, and the neighbor for Nick the Greek threatened to do bodily harm to Nick the Greek. I called the police last night, told them what had happened. They went to his house and took a report. Johnny Piñera should be removed as city council member, because he had threatened, not only that, not only threatened Nick the Greek because of his, the fact of what he posted, but also he went and hit him and allowed two other people to post on his website. And one of the postings said that the name of the person was, Jesus Ortega was one of them, and he said, "Nick is with those assholes." Now that's what he said. Now.
Excuse me, sorry to stop. Please, audience, stop your sign. Audience, please do not, you know, let the man speak. Please do not interrupt him, he will be called out of order. Sir, with the red hat, let the, let the record show that I'm giving him the first warning. I'm sorry.
She was making the noise right up here.
Let the record show that I'm gonna go ahead and call the lady next to the gentleman out of order. This is your first warning. On your second warning, you will be escorted out. Sir, I do apologize, please continue.
Okay, now, the next person that made a statement on his Facebook was Christian Torres. His remark was, "I live next to that old piece of shit," is what he said. Is that funny, Ortiz?
Excuse me, excuse me, please address the chair.
I am. And what he said was, "I'm gonna make his Fourth of July a living hell. Now you five or four should oust him from his position because of what he said." Not only did he violate his oath of office, but he violated the code of office that you guys live by, ethics code. You need to read it, because he has violated that old ethics code that you guys came up with in 2009, January the sixth, 2009.
Robert, excuse me, your time is up, sir.
Who's him I?
Let the record show that Mr. Robert Rodriguez has received his first warning. Let the next speaker, sir.
First name is Raul.
You don't understand. Second person, please, Robert.
You don't understand.
Roberts? And he will be followed by the man. Let the record say that the second, that please does not have clapping or any of that stuff. Guard, sir.
Um, Trump, bill the law. Uh, I'd like to talk about recipe one, two, three, four. Uh, the bill would require eligible employees to offer a favorable deposit retirement savings arrangement, uh, and have employees contribute a portion of their salary or raise.
I'm sorry, please stop talking, sorry, stop the clock. Um, there's a phone ringing, there is no phones. Please be respectful of the speaker, um, do apologize, sir. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, uh, this is, the, the, the program would, uh, the, the, the bill require, would require eligible employees to, to participate in the program. And, and since California has too many people living at or below the poverty level, they will opt out rather than have retirement savings, uh, funds taken out automatically from their paycheck. And, and so that's one of the reasons why this program will, will never be fully funded. The other reasons why it would never be fully funded is due to California's sanctuary city status, sanctuary state's status, and California's business unfriendly, uh, uh, status. Uh, only two, two states are more business unfriendly than California. And it will never be funded by, due to California's unfunded pension liabilities. The California Secure Retirement Provisions will be self, um, okay, the, the California Choice Retirement Savings Trust Fund will be oper, will be operated only if the board determines that, that based on market analysis, the provisions will be self-sustaining and sufficient funds are made available through a nonprofit or public or private entity, federal funding, or, or annual budget acts. Uh, they, they, they're, uh, they would never be able to secure the funding, the funding for the bankrupt California. The bill would also prohibit the board from implementing the program if the individual retirement arrangements offered, offered failed to qualify for the favorable federal income tax treatment, uh, under the IRS code. So this is the, uh, this is the, 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 uh, it's still fourteen minutes, but someone shut up my mic.
Go ahead, continue.
Okay, uh, in conclusion, there's, there's economic consequences of, of being a sanctuary state and a business unfriendly state, uh, and, and the, and the retirement from trust fund is one of the casualties.
Thank you. Deanne, and she will be followed by Arthur Sharper.
The Brown Act, not here.
Here again. They happen to know. I haven't been come, because the law has been happening, and I get rid of that. Yeah, I'm gonna be late. I'm gonna talk about page one, everybody should know about page one. Brown Act number five four nine six two, Brown Act number five four nine five zero. What on earth do you think you're doing? You did doing, I don't see it happening today. Your separation of our group, We the People Rising. Number one, how can we collaborate quietly among ourselves about any idea if we are separated? This impedes our First Amendment rights, that she cannot impede our collaboration. It is become, number two, it's becoming too dangerous to be separated from our group. One new lady was surrounded by an angry herd of dissenters. She had no protection from the police or even from our own group. She began to cry, lest she was not allowed to express her personal end of minds. Number three, you get to collaborate about what you want to state before, during, and after the meeting, even though sometimes you should not even be doing that according to the Brown Act. Number four, I would surmise a deal of breaking the Brown Act number five four nine six two by not following the intent of these words. Quote, A. One, the legislature has established a presumption in favor of the public access, not your access. My law professor would agree with me on this. Number five, this also applies to well-intended video-taking and still photography. A policeman just told someone to sit down. She wasn't making any noise. She has a right, that's part of her First Amendment right. What are you afraid of? I suggest that you be afraid of American populace. All this information will be sent to Trump administration. That is my vow to you. So be afraid of We the People Rising, not your so-called bosses. We the people have the right to request that you receive no money to help your town or police through grant money paid by the USA citizens of this country. Trump does listen to us. I haven't been here, because I told you they won't allow me to come, because I'm not fast enough on my feet anymore to get away from the dissenters who are trying to harm us. And I thank you for letting us be together this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Sharper?
All right. How's my cape? Can you read it? Can you read it? Make sure you can read it. Can you read it? Robin, is it nice and clear so they can see? Good. Yep. Well, you know what they say, capes are for superheroes. So I feel that's fitting for me to wear one, especially for all the crap I've had to put up with you, from you. Now, today's secret word is capacity. Where's Alfred Martinez? Where is he? Because he obviously doesn't know what it means. You know what it means? At full amount with nothing left. And he declared that this city council chambers was at capacity, or maybe it was under his direction. Maybe he doesn't speak English that well. Maybe that's the problem. You know, I so admire Chanel. She is a worldwide celebrity for speaking out for blacks and against the corruption of their heritage by illegal aliens, like the two that you appointed. I would like to add that black slaves didn't break into this country. Their country was broken into. They were kidnapped and brought to this country against their will. Just like you have those two illegal aliens on your city commissions who don't get paid to be there, because they're not supposed to be there. So of course, you mock black slaves, because you are enslaving people too, as did those Native Americans, quote unquote, who refused to release their slaves after the Civil War. I was giving a history lesson yesterday as John Adams, and a couple of brown supremacists and a few buffalo showed up to try to create havoc. Don't worry, Sylvia, I'm not talking about you. Um, you know, I know you're addicted to diet pills and Viagra and the rest. But I stood my ground and taught about the history of our country, a country that was founded on the rule of law, something that you do not understand, or rather choose to ignore, like Mr. Settles over here and Mr. Lozano here, who should be arrested along with the five of you, because you had me under false arrest. You got a government claim, and it has your name on it, Miss Sanabria, and it's gonna have the other three police officers who followed your corrupt orders. I have no respect for a police officer just fulfilling his duty. We got plenty of openings in Torrance and Redondo Beach. If you're a good police officer in Huntington Park, resign and go work in the beach cities. We'll make it nice for you. Oh, and guess what? I looked at the minutes that the five of you approved, June the twentieth. You guys lied on a government document, claiming that I was ruled out of order once by his suggestion, and then that I was disruptive and you ruled me out again. That's not true. A liar in the back of the room said that I had received a second warning. But even your minutes confirmed that there was no first warning for me. We have you red-handed, all five of you, suborning perjury on the minutes. And you know what? Don't try to change it. I took photos, I made paper copies, I took snippets, and I saved the PDF. You don't got, you guys don't go to jail for appointing two illegals. You will go to jail for government fraud, and I'm gonna be laughing the whole way. And as for some of these people who claim that Jeff Sessions will be fired, no, he's actually on fire enforcing our laws. And as for Mr. Piñera over here, he's the one who's anti-immigrant, targeting Nick the Greek, as the rest of you have as well. Have a nice day. God bless Donald Trump!
Excuse me, I would like to let the record show the red.
You cursed this?
Quiet over there.
He's out of order.
At this time, I would like to call Arthur Sharper out of the order. Let the record show that his first order has been given. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead, that's the last of the public record, uh, the public comments.
This one over here was out of order.
He was out of order as well. He called out, and you did nothing about it. You are out of order. You are picking and choosing the ones that get targeted. This man was shouting out right here, and we've got him with three people recording you. You are out of order, ma'am. You are out of order. You are discriminating against the residents of this community. We have you on record with Granicus. We have you on record with three cameras. This man called out of order right here, and you did nothing about it. You guys are out of order, you're corrupt. You pick and choose which people are excused. That's right, get out. Fuera, fuera los cuatro. Did you think you were gonna get away with it? Did you think you were gonna get away with it? We got you right here. Right here. This man was out of order, he called out. She didn't say a thing. She said not a word. This man has a crim, he has a criminal record. He was arrested for a felony, and now you see discrimination against people who don't live in this city. Right here, buddy. What would you like to tell the audience? You called out of order, and they said nothing. Why are you running away? Ustedes son todos cobardes, los cuatro cobardes todos. How about that? My Spanish is better than yours too. You're out of order, buddy. You have a warning, you're out of order. What would you like to tell? What would your father say? Or your mother say? You were not called out, they ignored you. Look at that, Settles. How about that? Where were you, Sergeant of Arms? You did nothing about it. You did nothing about it. I will not sit, I don't have to. There is no quorum at this time. There is no quorum. Thank you. That's the guy who got locked out of his own office, lying to us. There's Cisneros. You're out of order, buddy. Where is the co? Why are you not enforcing the rule of order? You saw that. You saw that. They didn't call him out. How about that?
He cursed and they didn't do nothing.
They did nothing about it. And they have a problem with black people too. And you have a problem with Jews as well, don't you? This man was ruled out of or, this guy was This man was ruled out of or, this guy was blurting out and not ruled out of order. And she's actually a man. She uses Viagra. Well, well, Alfred, I gave you a lesson on capacity. Did you hear it? Total lawlessness. Total lawlessness. Aided by you, buddy. Smile. Right over there. He's not a muchacho, he's a muchacha. Where it is. That guy's an asshole. She's a man. Sorry, I can't help. I'm trying. I'm sorry about that. I'm here as a citizen with We the People Rising. Okay, that's fine. Where's the water buffalo? Right over there. Oh, there's two of them right there. Sorry, I can't help myself. Okay. Did you hear my definition of capacity?
Take it easy.
I'll try. Did you see that? I can't help it. Victory is so sweet. Did you see that? That guy was blurting out twice, and Cosme here, who ordered me ruled out of, look, he smiles because he's ashamed of himself. Every person has a right to be called out. We are not a third world country. This is not Cuba. The police are not gods on earth with badges. We have a right to call them out. And I just did it. And there's Settles here, holding his breath because he knows he got busted. Look at him run.
This is what we're talking about, and we got...
This is it.
Is this everything that was all there?
Unbelievable. Janice, I loved your comments right there.
They did nothing to him.
Did you see that? They did nothing for that guy. He was blurting out, and he was shouting out about Malibu, and they said nothing to him. Nothing at all.
We're leaving.
We're gonna pop this, we're gonna leave this popsicle stand. My bag, please. That's mine.
They did nothing to him. They did not give him...
Busted! Thank you, sir. When I meet a new police officer, I have nothing against him, only the ones who are corrupt, or the ones who just do what they're told. What happened? Did we just shut a meeting down? Wait a minute, this room, it might be at capacity. Are we sure? Okay, okay. Thank you for your service. New faces, I always shake a hand. New faces, I always shake a hand. I have no problem with all police, okay? Just the ones who are corrupt. Wow, how about, hey, and this woman here, she hates this, and that man attacked children. That man's a racist, and that guy's a child molester, right there.
They are racist.
They are totally...
Against America.
Oh, right, that's fine. Thank you for your service. I have nothing against the police who do their job. I have nothing against the police who do their job, just the one corrupt ones. You look familiar. You look like you're in my class. That's it. Hey, diet pills, move your fat ass. What's up, Eden? So what was the felony for? What was the crime that you did? What crime did you commit?
Did you hear what she said to the red tie?
What crime did you commit? No. I heard red hat, buddy. You are corrupt, and you got busted, buddy. Smile. Tell me, what was the felony that you did? What was the felony you did? This guy abused his kids. What about you? What did you do?
You doxed me, right?
May 30th, 2014, a felony. Tell the world you're gonna run for office. You're not afraid of your past. You told me. So what did you do? What did you do? Notice how he won't tell me.
I'm still gonna be eligible to run because you...
No, notice how he didn't tell me. He's hiding from me now, look. Notice how he won't tell me the felony that he was accused of. This guy wants to run for city council. He committed a felony, but won't tell me why, but he says that he's not afraid of his past. Hey, diet pills, let's move. You guys are... This man compared illegals to black slaves, right here. Victory! This calls for, uh, selfie.
My fuck! Do not touch my wife!
Hey!
Do not touch my wife!
She's a racist. She's a racist. No, I'm doing it now. She's a racist. She's on her diet pills. She's addicted to diet pills, I told you. She's hostile. That's it. That guy's a felon, be careful. Or he's been accused of a felony. And where are the police? Where are the police? The police are nowhere. The police have any shame? Do you have ill land? We're taking it back. That woman...
President Trump.
Up there. That's it! Yeah! Hey, where's, uh, where's baby... What felony did you commit? You're not a married man? She's your girlfriend? You have two kids and you're not married? What do you want to explain to the residents of Cudahoga? There we go. She was part of the cabal that attacked children. Why did you do that? Why did you harass children and parents at a Santa Ana Fourth of July celebration? Why did you do that? You don't have a reason, you just wander around? And there's the water buffalo right there, who won't even look me in the eye. Check that out. That's how you do it! That's how you do it! Chowder! You are the past. What was the felony you committed? Tell the audience.
Why don't you go to Malibu? That's a sanctuary city.
So this guy committed a felony in 2014, and he won't tell anybody. He won't tell anybody. That's how you do it! Diet pills, diet pills. Come on, diet pills, get over it. She's an illegal alien enabler. She's on diet pills. I think she also uses Viagra.
But as an educator, you're here with them, and that's pretty disgusting.
I think we shut the meeting down. This land is our land. This country is our country. Yeah! We got it. We got them on record. They were choosing who they were gonna rule out of order. They picked on you? They didn't talk to the fat girl over there? That's right. He kept shouting, and they didn't say anything. They were busted.
And then he said...
Okay, I gotta be careful when it gets hurt. Our streets! My streets! Our streets! Our streets! Our streets! Our streets! Come over here, say hi, diet pills. Hi, diet pills. Hi, diet pills. Hi, diet pills. Hi, diet pills.
Who's street?
Trump's street!
Who's street?
Trump's street! Trump's street! Trump's street! Trump's street! Trump's street! And this guy abused his children. Everybody doxed this guy. He works in education. He was harassing kids at a Fourth of July event. Docks him! So, he wants to fuck people. I don't know why. What is this, a mass migration or something?
Illegal anchor baby!
Oops. Oh, 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 my. Oh, my gosh, he touched, she touched me. So what are you doing? What felony did you commit? Oh, come on. Eden, smile. What's the felony you committed? Oh, come on, don't be shy. What's your point? For standing for my civil rights. You have a problem with that?
He said the N-word, wait, ER at the end. Didn't you say that?
What crime did you commit? So this is for, so Beru Sanchez and Christian Mar, oh, and please tell me, why did you compare illegal aliens to black slaves? Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
It used to be illegal to help rid the way slaves.
What? Don't run! Good for you. Don't forget the hat. Okay. The only thing, you know, this guy is half the man that you ever were. Oh!
Boy!
Okay. You're not, he's not worth the jail sentence, I promise. I suffered enough. This guy's a pedophile too? I know this guy abused his kids. He harassed them at the July 4th event. He didn't have some linear history. He's not worth it, and she's a man, so she's definitely not worth it. Did I just shut a meeting down? I'm sorry, did I just shut a meeting down? Did I shut a meeting down? And what did I do? What did I do? Is it because I'm white? Trump, 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 Trump! Hey!